Regular city council meeting of the city of Port Weneme. It's a virtual Zoom meeting. The time is now six thirty P M. Will you please stand and join me for the flag salute? Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
And justice.
For all. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, can we, well, first of all, welcome to the regular city council meeting of November fifteenth, twenty twenty one. The meeting has been called to order. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the government code section fifty four nine five three subdivision E. And the recommendation of the Ventura County Health Officer issued September twenty one, twenty twenty one, following social distancing recommendations and determination by the city council on October fourth, twenty twenty one. The public was informed in advance of this meeting how to submit all public comments to our city clerk. And all submissions will be read into and part of the official meeting record. Live public participation is accessed through the meeting Zoom link published on the agenda. And we highly encourage and welcome the community's participation. Those attending will have multiple opportunities throughout the meeting to provide public comments. Madam Clerk, can you take a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Present.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rollins?
Here.
And Mayor Gama?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Tonight's inspiration will be provided by Councilmember Martinez. Mister Councilmember, will you please provide the inspiration? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank you for watching this meeting today, the city council meeting, and for today's inspiration. I'd like to honor our troops and veterans. In lieu of Veterans Day last week, being a military town with a Navy base, it makes it makes me really proud to to be an American. And I just want to give thanks to everybody that that served. To protect all of us. Because we are safe and we're protected and it's thanks to our military. I want to, I want to take the time to thank our city manager, Mister Connors, and everybody that's serving the military and who has served in the military. You're all my inspiration to make the world a better place and to make the best choices for our community. Because without you, we wouldn't be here today. Every time that I say the pledge of allegiance, I give thanks to everybody who's who's served and who's protected our country and and our rights. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. I think all of us echo your sentiment and certainly we appreciate Brad Connor's service to our nation as well as every other veteran in our midst. We had a wonderful day yesterday celebrating at the Ocean View Pavilion at Weneme Beach. We heard from the Reserve Band, the Air Force Reserve Band. It was really cool. So thank you so much for that. It was the end of a great week. We're now moving on to general public comments. We will now hear any general public comments pertaining to items not on the agenda, including those written comments received by our city clerk. Any comments from those who are participating live with us this evening? We'd like to ask that you use the Zoom raise your hand key or feature so that we can call on you during the appropriate comment times. This will be the same process for comments pertaining to each agenda item as well. Staff will unmute your mic and you will have three minutes to provide your comments. Do any members of the public have a general public comment tonight? Madam Clerk, do we see any raised hands? Madam Clerk, are there any comments to be read into the record at this time?
Fine, sir. I see Jacob Marquez has his hand up.
Okay. Hello, Jacob. Nice to see you tonight. We'll unmute you and you can proceed with your public comment.
I would like to acknowledge that many people highly appreciate the city's recent efforts toward restoring Bubbling Springs Creek into a functioning ecosystem once more. The removal of the hazardous coral trees is good for our public's health and replacing with natives is also good for our environment since native oaks are host to more than one hundred species of vertebrates and thousands of invertebrates. Also, the work on the permitting process to remove and reduce the reeds, that is, cattails and bulrushes along the upper portions of the creek will also be of great help. Will help reduce stagnation, which is so beloved by mosquitoes. And so that way there will be less mosquitoes in our creek. I'd also like to thank the help of all city members. And it is very much appreciated. And also the progress towards our city's parks and natural areas will continue into the present future for the benefit and enjoyment of the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Are there any other general public comments? Madam Clerk? Hearing none? Are there any individuals from the public with their hand up? I can't see everybody on my screen, so I need a little help.
Sure. I don't see anybody. I did have one member of the public come and speak to me at City Hall today. She was going to call in and I have a feeling we do have one phone call in that she may not be able to unmute herself. Charles, do we have the ability to unmute that phone call just to make sure? I believe her name was Kitty.
I have just sent a request asking the person participating via phone to unmute.
I I unmuted myself.
All right. Congratulations. Could you state your name and your address? And then you can proceed.
Kitty. Okay, Kitty Hurleman, one twenty two East Garden Green. And my comments are about regarding the leaking backflow at twenty six hundred Lido Boulevard, opposite end of the island from the fountain by the large tree. I first reported the leak on October twenty eighth and again almost two weeks later on November ninth. Now, another week later, as of twelve thirty this afternoon, it is still leaking. That's three weeks of leaking water. But hey, the weeds look good. We're all in a water shortage and being told to conserve water. I even hand wash my dishes in a large pan and pour the water out on my outside plants. I am. Item ten on the agenda is about water rates and Mayor Protem Rollins and Councilmember Perez are going to make comments on something. When is this going to be fixed? Who is going to pay for three weeks of wasted water? Somehow the residents of Port Weneme will. What happens if a resident has a leak on their property and ignored it? Do they get fined? Is the city going to get fined for this problem? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have your contact information so that we could follow up with you? Because certainly we want to get this fixed, no doubt in my mind.
What contact information do you want? I gave my address.
Okay.
Address again, please.
One two two East Garden Green. First name is Kitty, A I T T Y. Last name Hurleman, H U R L I M A N.
Okay, and I don't want you to broadcast your phone number out live. But Madam Clerk, do we have Kitty's phone number?
I cannot. But Kitty, if you have the opportunity to stop back by the City Hall, I would love to get that from you.
Can I call you tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay, what, just the nine eight six number?
Yes, it's nine eight six, six five zero.
Zero three, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty.
Thank you, sir. All right. All right, bye bye.
Thanks. Are there any other members of the public wishing to make a public comment?
I didn't know how to put my hand up. Is it okay if I?
You have your hand up now. I can see it.
Now I have it up.
You mean your Zoom hand.
Yes.
Okay, Cynthia Ross, could you tell us where you live? And you'll have three minutes.
Oh, I live in the Volker Park area in a home over here. And I just want to announce that this Sunday, we are doing our event at Volker Park. It will be from four to five thirty with a candle ceremony. And it is for the World Day of Remembrance for road traffic victims. And we are asking everybody to come out and support us in this. It would be, we'd love if anyone would like to speak. We have three minute slots for people. We will have some speakers here. And we're going to start handing out flyers tomorrow for this event. And I really, you know, I've been fighting for speed bumps for Volker. But my main concern right now is the intersection of Channel Islands and Volker. It is crazy. Yesterday, I was trying to get out of there. And I mean, cars were like crossing over, weaving around cars. It was, it's just, it's insane. It's a mess right there and it's very dangerous. And so I'm hoping that we can start working on that soon also.
Ms. Ross, do you have our email addresses? If you could send us that flyer, that would be great.
I did already. So when you go back to your computers, you'll see them.
Thank you so much. Do you have some time left? Do you have anything else to say?
No, that's pretty much it. And I just hope that everybody who can can make it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, it'll be a great way to meet the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, are there any other public comments?
Mayor Gama, I do have one written public comment for the general public comment section. If there's no other members from the public wishing to speak.
Okay, proceed, please.
Okay. The comment was received from George Shute and it reads, Mar Vista Apartments seat on the housing board. Mar Vista Apartments has allotted one seat on the housing board so that we will have a member to represent the interests of the residents at Mar Vista. We have recently come to the conclusion that we would be better served by a different member. Since the current method of selecting the member is by appointment by the housing authority, we researched HUD regulations to see if there is an alternate way to select a member. In fact, there are alternate methods available. One is to elect the member in much the same way members of the Board of Directors of the Mar Vista Resident Council are elected. In order to change that system, the procedure is to petition the housing authority to convert to an elected member system. This information is from Federal Register Volume sixty four, number two oh three, two four CFR, Part nine sixty four point four twenty and CFR, Part nine six four point one three zero. We prepared a petition making that request. We circulated the petition and obtained signatures from nearly half of the residents at Mar Vista. That is a substantial response from the residents here for a petition. On October twenty fifth, we submitted those petitions to the Executive Director Connors, Chairman Gama and Chairman Protem Rollins. All three individuals have copies of the signed petitions if you would like to see them. We are asking that the Housing Authority Board take up the issue, discuss it with us, then take a vote on whether we can have the right to vote for our own representative. Thank you. And that concludes my public comment.
Okay, and I wanted to make a public comment on my own. Recently, there have been a lot of social media discussion about the removal of coral trees. And I wanted to to provide information on that. We have seen several failures of coral trees of late. I have a photo here of one at Surfside Four. And you can see it fell across a walkway, a sidewalk that's heavily trafficked. The city has lost, I think, four trees in the last three years. In the last year and a half, two trees have failed near the Ocean View Pavilion. One of them was completely deteriorated, diseased within, and the whole tree fell across the Bubbling Springs walking path. More recently, a tree at the corner of the walking path of Bubbling Springs and Surfside Drive, a major portion of the tree collapsed and fell across a walking path. So the city has become more and more concerned. And we've actually been very fortunate not to have sustained a significant serious injury or even a death. In addition, several cars at Surfside Four have had large tree branches break away from coral trees and fall across them and cause significant damage. So the city has initiated a inspection program with an arborist to try and identify these trees that pose an immediate and obvious risk. And one of those such trees was determined to be in Volker Park and it has since been removed. However, with the event that happened at Surfside recently, you can see that some of these trees will absorb and soak up a bunch of water and become so heavy and crack and break. So the, so I just wanted to get the information out there that the 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 city is not just indiscriminately going out and taking trees down. The city is involved in a process to try and identify trees that are prone to this hazard. It's a life safety risk. And we're very fortunate that nobody has been injured. And that's the goal of the city is to identify trees that may fail. And we're working through that process. So just want to get the word out that we're not indiscriminately removing trees just to remove trees. We are a tree city and we do love our trees. And our policy for trees is when you remove a tree, you replace the tree. And we're intent on doing that. Okay, next item on the agenda is approving the agenda for tonight's city council meeting. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Can I make an amendment to the the agenda? I I want to, I want to move that we move item number six to number eight and then just move it up one, have that be the last one.
So you're making a motion to move item six?
To to eight and seven to six and what would be eight to seven?
Okay, so you want item number, okay, I think I understand your motion. I'll second it. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote?
Mayor Protem Rollins?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
And Councilmember Perez? Motion passed with unanimous.
Okay, Madam Clerk, in case I forget, please help me out as we move through the agenda. I am, I do want to let everyone know that the allergies have got me today. And so allergy pills, Benadryl, so drinking a lot of water. So I'm trying to get through this as best I can. Okay, we're moving on to presentations. Scott Madelon will be, our emergency operations manager, will provide us with a COVID nineteen update. Mister Madelon, are you there?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council and staff. Welcome into our November fifteenth COVID update.
All right.
Well, last time I was before you was September twentieth. And we have had lots of action in the COVID world since then. And I look forward to this presentation. As always, I ask that you hold your comments, questions and any concerns you may have to the end of the presentation, at which time I would be happy to answer as many of those for you as possible. Mister Mister Perez, please advance the slide for me. So we're going to do a little comparison here by the numbers from September to November. And the story goes like this. We've had an increased testing rate. About three hundred and four thousand people have been tested between that almost two month span. We've had an additional almost five thousand positive cases here in the county. And the unfortunate number of another sixty three deaths here in the county with five in the ICU. And these numbers, again, were on a Friday moving in for this presentation, so they have adjusted slightly. Here locally in Port Weneme, we have had a total of just over twenty nine hundred cases. And we are up from last time in September, a hundred and forty two cases. And unfortunately, we have also had an additional four deaths, which brings our total to thirty two. The active caseload in Port Weneme right now is down from forty five to twenty eight, which is the trend we want to see. So we've had a reduction by twelve cases. Next slide. I always like to do a little visual comparison on the metrics here that are provided by the county. And without going into too much detail about each of these, I think the graphic speaks for itself that we are going in a downward trend, which is good. That is what we want to see. The last time I was before you in September, if you can see, the seven day average case rate was up into the nineteen point three range. And that's down to nine point six. And the adjusted is down to eight point one. So what does this basically tell us? This tells us that the downward trend is good. Our case rates are going down. However, we still have this issue of COVID that we've been dealing with now for going on almost two years. So we still have some work to do, as you will see in the next couple of slides. Go ahead and advance to the next one, please. When I'm doing a presentation, I always like to give some historical reference. And if you look at the bottom of your screen, you're going to see numbers from back in March. And if you recall that time period, we were doing the colored tier system of purple and red, orange and yellow. And if you compare those to the top right of your screen, which is where we are today, you'll see that our seven day average case rate is actually slightly higher. But when they adjust that down for reporting purposes, we are down to eight point one. So that is a good reduction. And also, our seven day PCR testing positivity rate has gone down to two point three. And our health equity has gone down from six point eight way back then to two point six. So again, a nice trend that we want to continue to see here across the county. Next slide, please. Let's talk about vaccine and comparing where we were two months ago till now. As I've highlighted for you in the upper left portion of your screen, we are at just under seventy one percent of the county being fully vaccinated if you are twelve or older. And as we can see currently today, we're at about seventy five point six. Clearly, this would not go down because you can't take a vaccine from somebody. However, when we look at two months going by and increasing by about five percent, that's where we want to look at and see if we can increase that number. Because I will demonstrate on the next couple of slides how and when we will be dealing with the mask mandate. Something of note, if you look at the bottom portion of your screen on the histogram, we are on an upward trend of vaccination at about three thousand. If you go all the way back, we're at a high of about ten thousand moving forward. And during the summer months, as you can see in July through September, it kind of dipped down into the one thousand range. And we want to see that trending back up. So as we move into our holiday months and it gets a little colder outside and folks are traveling, it's crucial that we continue to see this vaccine rate climb. Next slide, please. So how do we do fair in Port Weneme in relation to the rest of the city? The answer is we have a lot of improvement to make. If you take a look at this chart, I received this off of the Ventura County's site. And we were notified by Public Health that we have some, we have some improvements to make as we are one of the lowest fully vaccinated cities in the county. That's at about sixty one percent, which you can see I have in a box in red. If you kind of take a little peek up and notice some of the other cities, some of them, we aren't too far behind. But per our capita of about twenty one thousand people versus somebody like Oakview, who has sixty two hundred people, we are by far behind where we could be. And what we want to see is these rates of fully vaccinated folks go up in our city. And there has been some identification as to why this may be happening and some solutions that we're currently working on. And I'd like to share with you those on the next slide, please. So there has been an initiative started by by the county of Public Health that has funded two part time workers to come into our city and is called the Prometaurus Initiative. And what it aims to do is go into the vulnerable populations, the underserved community. Oftentimes, these folks are what we call the hidden community members that we don't often see and begin to educate them and hopefully lead them to a vaccine and some more positive opportunities for them to become protected against the virus. This has, Chief Slindis and I have been in conversations with the county over the last couple of weeks. And this program is up and running. We expect to see deployments of these workers out within the next month here as we come up into the holiday season. And and again, this is, this is a reach out and a collaboration with our city and and the county to really close that gap between those who have received the vaccine and those who haven't, who may be looking for it but don't have the necessary means yet in which to get those. And some of those means could be access. It could be language barriers. It could be general distrust of kind of the current situation. It could be a lot of variables that these two highly skilled workers who are Spanish speakers can help us identify and bring the vaccine to them. So we are really excited about this program. We think it's going to do a great job for us here in the in the city and bring this vaccine to those folks who still may not have that access. Next slide, please. Let's talk about the big mask mandate extension. So as you all know, of course, we are still under the mask mandate. And I wanted to bring this slide up to explain kind of the three steps that it's going to take in order for that to potentially be lifted. I do have in the next couple of slides, each one of these topics broken down so we can kind of see where we are at currently versus where we need to get to. But just on the topical sense, our first one right here is we need to get to a daily case rate of about seven per hundred thousand and maintain that for three weeks. The second one, of course, is we need low and stable hospitalizations across the county. And that is based on the judgment of the health officer. And finally, eight weeks needs to pass between the time that the five to eleven year old emergency authorization occurred or eighty percent of the county's eligible population needs to be fully vaccinated. Next slide, we'll do a comparison and show you kind of where we're at. Here is Ventura County as in comparison to the CDC graph that you see on the bottom left, the picture of California. We have been identified as the orange tier, which means there is still substantial spread of COVID nineteen. As you can see on the bottom left, many of the coastal towns are all within the substantial rate. And there are some interior counties that are in the high rate of transmission with only one that has met the low rate of transmission. So that's what we are going to work on. Currently, with our adjusted average, seven day average case rate, we're at one point one, which is what the arrow is pointing to. So we are about about one off of that. So you may be asking yourself the question, well, it seems like we're pretty close, right? I hope so. But on average, it's taken us a little while to get from the nines down into the eights. And it's going to take probably some extra work on a lot of our parts to get from eight down to seven. But I'm optimistic that we can get there. What we just need to take the precautions in order to do that. So again, according to the CDC, we are in the substantial risk category, looking to get down another percentage point or so. Next slide, please. The second criteria, of course, is on the judgment of the health officer. I'm not authorized, of course, to speak on his behalf, but I can tell you what the numbers are. Twenty eight hospitalizations and five in the ICU for our entire county. The numbers that just came out before the meeting has this up to ten in the ICU and thirty two hospitalizations. And that is across the county. Next slide, please. And of course, our third and final criteria, the eight weeks or the eighty percent. So how does that fare? November fourth was the day in which five to eleven year olds were available for the vaccine on the emergency basis. And if you schedule eight weeks from that day, that puts you roughly at December thirtieth. If you use the or strategy and you say, okay, or we get to eighty percent of the county's population that is eligible for the vaccine and that is not including the five to eleven year olds, we are currently at seventy five point six. So in theory, could we get to the, can we get to that where the mask mandate could be lifted? It's possible. But it won't happen anytime before eight weeks just due to the fact that that's the third bit of criteria in order to reach. So if we're thinking when when we may not need to use the masks, it's going to be after December thirtieth. Next slide, please. Last presentation, we talked about vaccine mandates. We know a lot is going on in the county of Los Angeles. We know a lot is going on in the county of Los Angeles. So what is going on in Ventura County? And I will answer that on two slides. The first one dealing with our schoolchildren. If you have not been made aware, you are now, that California has become the first state in the nation to add COVID-19 as a mandatory vaccine for school-aged kids. How does this go with the timing when our youngsters get back into school the following semester as our holiday season comes to a close? And the guidance or the blueprint is still kind of being worked on. But here's the idea. And this came directly from the State of California's website that students will be required for in-person learning starting the term following full approval. What that means is if you are 12 or older, the vaccine has been fully approved for you. And the following term would theoretically be this January. Moving from that and seeing how our county is moving forward with that, it's still in development. I can come back and report to you as we work through those hurdles. But I can tell you that the State of California has made this a mandate. So we're going to be looking to see how that's going to come up here in our county. Next slide, please. Let's talk about boosters. This was being talked about on my last presentation, and we weren't sure what the guidance was going to be. So here is the guidance on who should receive a booster and who should strongly consider it. And for the folks listening out there, 65 years or older, your long-term care residents or 50 through 64 with significant underlying medical conditions should be receiving the booster at this time. And those who may consider it would be you're 18 through 49 with any underlying medical conditions or 18 through 64 if you are at risk of increased exposure to COVID-19 due to your occupation. So that potentially means anybody who is in our police department in the city who wants that booster, you are eligible for it. So if your occupation has you out at risk and you are fully vaccinated, definitely consider getting that booster. They are available. All you have to do is go online. You can start at BC Emergency and click on COVID, little icon at the top. And you can search that database. Or these are also available at all of your local grocery stores, Walgreens, and so on. So the county is not delivering these boosters as they initially did with the first set of vaccine. But they are going through all of the major grocery store outlets and through your doctor's office. So definitely consider those. Next slide, please. I presented last time on unemployment rates, bringing how are our businesses doing and how are the labor and job force looking? At our last presentation, I reported they're at about 6.2% unemployment. The good news is that dropped about a percent. And we're hovering at about 5.3 as of September 21. Notice that these are always reported a month or so behind. So as we go into the holiday season and we have the job force coming in for the seasonal, this rate is not adjusted for that. So I am optimistic and hopeful that those folks looking for work, there's plenty of it out there for them, especially this holiday season. So as we continue with the presentation, I have one more slide for you. And these are kind of some final thoughts as we move into the holiday season. So I mentioned in LA County, we have now a... You must provide a vaccine proof if you want to go into restaurants and venues and such. And I told her I'd report back to you to see if Ventura County is offering the same type of enforcement. And as of right now, the answer is no. There is no proof of vaccine needed to enter our businesses. However, there are some preventative measures that we all need to take a moment to stop and consider, especially as the holiday season gets near. Folks are maybe traveling across the country again, enjoying their families. Of course, there's live events going on. There's large gatherings. And of course, those crowded malls as we all hope to have a great holiday shopping year. So a couple of reminders. Number one, this is an interesting one I heard the other day. Is there's folks saying that if you brush your teeth really well and you rinse and floss, that it helps prevent the spread of COVID. Although that's a great oral hygienic opportunity for you, it is not the primary way to stop COVID from being transmitted. Hand washing is another great thing to do, and it's great to prevent lots of diseases. But with COVID-19, it's most important for us to all recognize and understand that the best way to prevent the spread of COVID is two reasons or two things. Number one, make sure you're wearing your mask. And number two, social distance from each other as much as possible. And the third one I would also recommend is if you haven't got the vaccine yet, really think about getting that vaccine before you start gathering with friends and family and we have another spike of COVID just due to our natural desire to want to be close to one another for the holiday season. So optimistic, we're moving in the right direction with these measures that are being taken specifically for our city here in Port Juani. I'm positive, or I'm feeling positive that we can make good strides and steps to get some of our underserved community members an opportunity to get vaccinated and to have a wonderful holiday season and not be spreading COVID-19. With that, I believe that is my final slide. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, I would be more than happy to address them.
Thank you. Councilmember Hernandez has her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Gama. Thank you, Mr. Manlon, for the excellent presentation. Very well done. I had a question about where we are with the flu virus, the regular flu. Are we seeing an uptick in that? Or are we seeing something a little different?
It is actually being asked that if you are going for a COVID shot, you can also get your flu vaccine at the same time. There was some concern that if you got your flu vaccine, that you would not be eligible to get your COVID vaccine. So as all the medical minds are coming together, it's highly encouraged that you get both of them. And what we saw last year was an interesting decrease in flu, primarily because we were masked and separated. And the idea going into the holiday season here is that you are highly encouraged to get the flu vaccine as well so that we aren't contending with both COVID and the flu to create this kind of super event that harms a lot of people.
Right, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Rollins.
I want to personally attest that you can get shots on both arms. My wife just recently went to CVS. She got her COVID booster shot and she got her flu shot. Now, her arms were sore for a number of days, but she's safely vaccinated. The other thing I wanted to comment on this is that the Gold Coast Transportation District, which I represent our city on, has a free pickup and pickup for anybody who needs to get a COVID shot that doesn't have the transportation in our city. So there's a number that I will share with our city manager and put it up on our local Port Juani, City of Port Juani website. But again, if one of the reasons you haven't been able to get there is because you don't have transportation, they do provide free transportation for that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? I don't see any hands. Thank you for a very thorough presentation. Really appreciate it. Last hands for any questions or comments? Do I hear any? Okay, thank you. We're now going to move on to the consent calendar. Item number two, approved minutes of the city council meeting for the regular meeting of October 18, 2021, and November 1, 2021. The recommendation is to approve the minutes. Receive and file the finance cash disbursement form, October 26, 2021 through November 8, 2021. Recommendation is to receive and file the dispersments. Number four, treasurer's investment report, September 30, 2021. Recommendation is to receive and file the September 30, 2021 treasurer's report as presented. And item number five, contract for public works, uniform, and supplies rental for a term of five years. Recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement approved as to form by the city attorney with Unifirst Corporation for a term of five years with a not to exceed an annual amount of $22,000 for public works, uniform, and supply services. Are there any public comments regarding any of the consent agenda items?
There are no written public comments unless any members of the public wish to speak.
I don't see any raised hands. I would like to pull number four for a question. And would entertain a motion for items two, three, and five.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez? And Mayor Gama?
Me and Jackson vote yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Unanimously for items two, three, and five, and we can go straight into discussion for item number four.
Yes, I just wanted to hear the investment return from the county. It's my understanding that all our excess funds that we have in the city are held in the county. And so what was our rate of return for the period ended September 30, 2021?
Hi, this is Lupe. I was just sorry, I was trying to unmute myself.
Thank you. Can you speak a little bit louder? You're a little faint.
Let me increase my speaker. Is that better?
A little bit, yes.
Okay, awesome. The rate of return is... Let me pull up the report. I think it was 0.44%.
So is that half of 1% basically, or close to?
That would be close to half of 1%. Yeah.
Half of 1%?
Let me give me one second. I don't want to... Yes, so for the Ventura County investment, it was almost half a point, 0.47%.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring that out because, as you know, I keep talking about our unfunded liability with pension. We have a 115 trust, and we haven't funded it yet. And this is the reason why we should consider funding it because we're earning less than half of 1% on our excess funds being held at the county. Okay, I'd like to entertain... Are there any other questions on this item four? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
I'll second it. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Rollins?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
And Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Right. I'm lost. Hold on a second, sorry. Okay, we're now moving on to item number six, Hero's History and Heritage nomination. No, we're not. We're moving on to item number seven. Hero's History and Heritage nomination, Douglas Breeze Memorial Tree. Assistant Deputy City Manager Charles Perez will provide a staff report.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. For the record, Charles Perez, Deputy City Manager. So item number seven pertains to an application to honor Mr. Douglas Breeze pursuant to the city's Heroes History and Heritage policy. The application seeks to plant a memorial tree in front of City Hall near the entrance to honor the former councilmember mayor and public works director. Information included in the agenda packet highlights Mr. Breeze's work to establish a wastewater contract with the Navy and various organizational improvements that enhanced services provided by the city. Project costs inclusive of staff administration are estimated to be approximately $1,560, with ongoing maintenance expected to be approximately $120 on an annual basis. The applicant has raised funds to pay for the purchase and delivery of the memorial tree and is proposing that the city pay for the remaining costs. The city removed five trees as part of the NG project. And as a result of those removals, is required to replant five new trees. If approved, this memorial tree would serve to satisfy one of those requirements, along with the planting and ongoing maintenance costs. Staff is supportive of recognizing Mr. Breeze's accomplishments, but has proposed an alternate location for the tree. I will attempt to pull up a aerial that shows that location. Okay. So this diagram is used for both this item and the next agenda item. Tree number one is the proposed location for the memorial tree to honor Mr. Breeze. The site that had been proposed by the applicant in front of the City Hall entrance was the site of a former tree, a coral tree, which was removed in 2017. At the time of removal, it was noted that the soil conditions at that location contained a fungus that would be problematic to future plantings. Additionally, the site in question is used for various special events. And the presence of a tree at this location would create a conflict with the continuation of those events. As well, the potential for hard escape uplift and tree branch breakage in a highly foot-traffic area would increase the city's potential for risk exposure. Lastly, the site in question is the subject of a second memorial tree proposal, the next agenda item. But the size of the planting site would not allow for two trees to be planted. There were various staff members that were involved and consulted regarding the proposed location. And many of them are on the call or on the meeting tonight if there are specific questions about the proposed location. The staff pursuant to the policy reviewed the application for completeness, accuracy, and alignment with city policy. And the item was presented to the Citizen Advisory Commission on October 28. The Citizen Advisory Commission voted unanimously to support the proposal as presented by staff and recommended that the city council approve the item. The city council is now asked to consider the application and staff report and take action as it deems appropriate. That concludes the staff recommendation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions for Deputy City Manager Charles Perez? Are there any public comments on this item? And I can't see the screens now. Help me out, Charles, please.
Sir, I have not received any public comments nor any written comments. I don't see any members of the public other than I do believe Mayor Pro Tim Rollins had a hand up.
Same thing I'm seeing.
Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim Rollins.
I just want to comment that as a... That we are proud to be a Tree City USA. And I think it's very appropriate that we recognize past mayors that have given so much to our community and been in difficult positions. And I think that's an appropriate way to recognize our past mayors. And I might even make a comment. While this is a new situation, there are another number of mayors in the past years that have passed away that contributed to our city. And we might want to look forward as we move forward to being able to identify locations for those past mayors who hopefully have not been forgotten.
Mayor, you're muted, sir.
Thank you for that. I knew it was gonna come at least once tonight. Are there any other comments or questions of staff? May we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rollins?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you. Going to move on to the next item, Heroes History Heritage nomination, Ellis Green Memorial Tree. Charles Peretz, Deputy City Manager, will you please present?
The next item may sound like I'm repeating myself. We have a an application to honor former mayor and councilmember Ellis Green. The application and proposal is nearly identical to the suggestion and nomination to recognize Mr. Breeze. The applicant, Mr. Stephen Gama, as resident, submitted a request to plant a memorial tree in front of City Hall near the entrance. The information that was included in the application in the agenda packet highlighted Mr. Green's work to garner support for shoreline protection and his emphasis on community diversity. Once again, the project costs inclusive of staff administration are estimated to be approximately $1,560, with ongoing maintenance of approximately $120 a year. The applicant has purchased the tree, and it has been delivered to City Hall. The application seeks for the city to pay for the remaining costs. Once again, as part of the NG project, the city had removed five trees. If approved, this memorial tree would satisfy one replanting requirement of those removals. And staff is supportive of the proposal to recognize Mr. Green's accomplishment, but once again has proposed an alternate location. The reasons that staff recommends against the location in front of City Hall were described in the last agenda item. And if I pull up the aerial once again, the triangle noted as tree number two, underneath that it says remove sycamore tree, that is the location proposed for the memorial tree to honor Mr. Ellis Green. It should be noted that the site currently contains a failing sycamore tree, which is proposed for removal. Once removed, that would provide additional spacing and allow for some modification to the precise planting site of a memorial tree at that location. And once again, with this application, staff reviewed the materials for completeness with the policy requirements, accuracy, and presented the item to the Citizen Advisory Commission on the 28th of October. The commission voted unanimously to support the proposal as presented by staff and recommended approval by the city council. The city council is now asked to approve the proposal as presented. And I'm available for questions or additional information.
Thank you very much for that report. I do want to make a brief comment as I was the applicant. But before I talk about Ellis Green, I do want to talk about Douglas Breeze. The employees of Public Works pooled their money together to purchase the tree in, in memory of, of Douglas Breeze, so that's a very, very nice, and it shows that Mr. Breeze was very well respected by the Public Works employees. In regards to the tree for Ellis Green, my aunt was a very close friend of Ellis Green for many, many, many years. And although I initially purchased the tree, the friends of Ellis Green, they had a group that they called the Five Amigos. They did a lot of traveling together. They insisted that they are gonna pay for the tree and the plaque, and so they had reimbursed me for the cost of that tree, and so I just wanted to get that out there. And I think planting trees, coastal oak trees, it's a native tree, and shout out to Jacob for educating me on a native coastal oak tree. Not only is it a native tree to this area, it's very much a drought tolerant tree, and the coastal oak is known for being able to take moisture out of fog and sustain itself, so it, it serves a couple great purposes for our city. And I think the tree is a beautiful tree myself. So with that, any other questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tim Rollins?
Yeah. My one concern, and maybe it won't be a concern, is that the sycamore tree that was, was removed because it didn't do very well. I would just implore whoever installs it to make sure that it's installed in a proper way so that these trees are kept for a long period of time. I don't know why, because sycamore trees are around, and, and I saw the one there, and it was looking in really bad shape, and I would hope that these would continue to be in good shape.
Yeah, I think, I think the tree is failing. It's not, it's just not doing well, but I believe, and I'm not an arborist, but I believe it was determined to be root-bound and stuck in a chronic state or something like that, but I don't know. Charles, do you have anything to say on that?
I did not have direct conversations with an arborist, but it is my understanding that it is root-bound, and that has stunted the growth of the tree, yes.
Okay. Okay, can we have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second it. Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call vote?
Can you approve Tim Rollins?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, we are now going to piggyback to item number six, Heroes History Heritage nomination, Jonathan Sharkey Memorial Walkway. Do we, staff will present a report first, and then we'll entertain public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, once again. So item number six on the agenda pertains to an application to honor Mr. Jonathan Sharkey pursuant to the city's Heroes History and Heritage policy. By way of brief background, prior city council actions sought to recognize the mayor and councilmember for his service to the community. Public input on that proposal led the city to conclude that it was necessary to develop a policy to receive and evaluate such requests. And on December 7th, 2020, the city council adopted the Waynimi Heroes Historic Preservation and Cultural Heritage Policy. The proposal before you consists of naming a portion of the beach walkway in honor of Mr. Sharkey and installing three plaques in the identified areas. The application and agenda report provide an overview of Mr. Sharkey's contributions to the community, most significantly his efforts to mitigate the impacts of sand erosion. Project costs are estimated to be $6,000, and ongoing maintenance is anticipated to be $300 annually. Other costs include staff administration, and as noted in the stat, in the application, these are anticipated to be about $3,800. The applicant has secured a $5,000 donation from Reach and is proposing the city pay for all remaining costs. The proposed financial contribution from the city would be considered a city sponsorship. The project would be eligible for such a sponsorship based on the project location and scope, which is aligned with the criteria in the policy. So once again, I will pull up a site plan here. So this shows the approximate location of the walkway that is proposed to be named after Mr. Sharkey, along with the three plaques that would be installed along the walkway. The applicant had provided two different options for the eastern terminus of the walkway, and the staff recommendation is to use the plaza adjacent to the Ventura Surfside intersection. Once again, staff reviewed the submission for completeness, accuracy, and policy alignment, and presented the item to the Citizen Advisory Commission on October 28th, 2021. The commission voted unanimously to support the proposal as presented by staff and recommended that the city council approve the item. The applicant, Ms. Sylvia Munu Schnaps, is present, is available to answer questions, provide additional information the council may have, and staff is ready to provide answers to questions council may have as well. That concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you. Are there any public comments?
Sir, I have three written public comments, and I, I do see Sylvia Schnaps' hand up as well as Councilmember Perez. So if you'd like me to read those first, we can do that, or if you'd like the general public comments for the participants, we can do that.
I'd like you to read the received comments first, please.
Yes, sir. The first comment was received from Mr. David Scrivner, and it reads, "City Council, in 2019, there was an attempt to change the name of the Waynimi Pier to the John Sharkey Pier. The proposal was extremely unpopular and provoked a large number of negative comments from the residents of Port Waynimi. The agenda item proposing the name change was hastily removed after a barrage of negative feedback. This occurred in pre-COVID days, and the council chamber was packed with people in opposition. I don't remember the exact ratio of positive and negative comments about this issue, but I think approximately 90% of the comments were in opposition. The proposal, the proposal created a fair amount of anger in the community. The item was pulled from the agenda during the council meeting. I believe that it was a major contributing factor to the shakeup of city council members in the following election, when both of the incumbent council members up for reelection lost their seats. Somehow, a similar proposal has made its way back onto the agenda. I don't understand why. The public spoke loudly and clearly about this matter two years ago. This time, it's proposed to rename the Lighthouse Promenade after John Sharkey. This is an unforced error. Naming public property after local political figures is a divisive issue. The residents I have spoken with about this matter are strongly opposed to it. A similar item on tonight's agenda seeks to recognize the positive contributions of former mayors by planting trees at City Hall and placing plaques near the trees. This seems reasonable, and I believe that it has the support in the community. I strongly recommend that the council reject the motion to rename the promenade and plant a tree for Mr. Sharkey. Signed, David Scrivner." The second comment I have is from Mr. Jeffrey Scarborough, and it reads, "City Council members, I would ask the city council to instead consider using Shumash-themed names around Waynimi Beach Park as a way to honor and remember the true history and heritage of our beach. Such a theme could be incorporated in many ways throughout the park, which would likely be widely supported by the public. November is also National Native American Heritage Month, so perhaps you could consider consulting with some local Shumash elders prior to making a permanent decision on the issue. Many Waynimi residents consider the local beach area somewhat sacred in terms of its relationship with past and current residents. Prior attempts to rename the pier and another section of the beach walkway were met with opposition by many residents who were opposed to the renaming concept in general. Please consider honoring Mr. Sharkey's service in a significant manner within the many options available at the City Hall complex. Thank you." The third comment is from Cheyenne Castroni, and it reads, "Greeting Port Waynimi Council. My name is Cheyenne Castroni, and I am a lifelong resident of Port Waynimi and South Oxnard. I write to you today with regards to business item number six, the proposed Hero History and Heritage nomination regarding Jonathan Sharkey Memorial Walkway. Mr. Sharkey, who lived a life of service to our community, should in fact be memorialized by the city. However, I do now believe it is wise, I do not believe it is wise for the city to do so by using his namesake for the walkway. I humbly ask the council to consider that this walkway is frequented by families, beachgoers, and surfers such as myself. The idea of walking down Sharkey Pathway before entering the ocean conjures up feelings of anxiety and discomfort. I can't help but think of my six-year-old niece, who we are teaching to surf, who knows nothing of local politics, but she knows what Sharkey means, making her less inclined to join us in the water for our family activity. But we don't want Jonathan Sharkey's legacy to be one of fear and discomfort for residents and visiting beachgoers. Let's find another way to honor him, perhaps with a bench at the beach or a new swing set for the children to play on, which would add value to our beach, within the same way that Mr. Sharkey's work is for our community. And that concludes my three written general public, or, sorry, public comments for item number six."
Thank you. Can we call on the other speakers who are present, if there are any?
Yes, sir. I see Sylvia Schnaps' hand up.
All right, thank you. Mayor Gama, the other city council members for Port Waynimi. I'm Sylvia Munu Schnapp, resident of Camarillo, and I had the pleasure of serving alongside Mr. Jonathan Sharkey as he served faithfully for the community of Port Waynimi as we both were on the council. John Sharkey served for 24 years on the city council, the second-longest-serving council member in the city's history. The other individuals who served, one more than him was Orbin Carpenter, and he has the community center named after him. Another was Doral Wright, and he has the center, the Ocean View Pavilion, named after him. And so it just is fitting for Jonathan Sharkey to have something that is of an asset in the community to be named in his honor. He was, he served with class and was the epitome of a public servant who provided the city with vision and strategic direction. He was also one of the city council members when the city came up with its city charter, charter very long ago, and he really championed the sand replenishment program at Waynimi Beach. He faithfully served RDP 21 as a representative from the city, and also served Beacon, which is an organization that talks about coastal erosion, sand replenishment, et cetera, et cetera. He did serve the city in other aspects, and I believe that he was extraordinary in his service to guide the city in the right direction and accomplished a great deal for all the residents and businesses, as well as the military and the Port of Waynimi banks of New York City. So this is to honor him with a great deal of respect by his colleagues, both within the city as well as in the region. Thank you.
I'm, I can't see the full screen. Are there any other live comments to be made, Madam Clerk?
I don't see Councilmember Perez's hand up at this time.
Yes, can, excuse me, Assistant Deputy City Manager, can you take down the PowerPoint or whatever that is? It's clouds by view of, there we go, thank you. Okay, what was that, Madam Clerk? Okay, I see it. Councilmember Perez, the floor is yours.
While I, I appreciate Sylvia's application and her appreciation for Mr. Sharkey, I find it uncomfortable to elevate any one councilmember above any other, as I initially did with my own request to have Mr. Green's tree planted in front of the city, and I got to thinking about it, that it would have been inappropriate to any other mayor, councilmember who passed and whose family wanted something to become an honor in their name, that I think planting a tree is appropriate, an appropriate memorialization for current councilmembers, the ones who were in line for memorial and future councilmember and mayors. So I would like to make a motion to offer a, another recommendation to plant a tree, Mr. Sharkey's honor, on the city property and have a plaque, as we are dealing with Mr. Breeze and Mr. Green.
I'll second that motion. I too, I mean, I, I think anyone that agrees to serve deserves to be recognized. And I don't think your length of service should determine your And I don't think your length of service should determine your recognition. But most importantly, I think that the City Hall is the most appropriate place to represent any and all persons that serve on the city council. And just last week, the federal government took the initial steps to establish a 7,000-square-mile Chumash Marine Sanctuary, of which Waynima-- Waynimi is a focal part of that Chumash National Marine Sanctuary. And last week, we got a-- we got an idea, a concept submitted from a resident to establish a Chumash historical walkway from the promenade all the way to the lighthouse. And so those two things really got my attention. And I think-- I think that John Sharkey's service is amazing, just as Doug Breeze and Ellis Green. And I hope that we could find a way to honor all-- all past in the same manner at City Hall. And then my only other concern-- and it's really-- I don't know, I guess you could say it's not my business, but I'm trying-- I don't understand how Reach became the funding mechanism for this recreation, education, arts, and culture in Waynimi. I don't understand how this fits into that mission. But again, that's actually none of my business. I'm not a member of Reach, and I didn't participate in that, but it is a question to me. So any other discussion or comments?
Sir, Sylvia Munoz Schnaps' hand raised to provide additional comments.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gama. One-- two clarifications I want to make is that Scrivner wrote about naming it through the lighthouse, and it's not true. It's the section of the walkway from Ventura Road to pretty much the intersection at Surfside Road-- Surfside Drive and Market Street. It wouldn't go towards the promenade. That's not the promenade. And the three plaques-- there would be two bookend signs that would just signify John Sharkey Walkway, and the middle would actually have a "Aww" relief of him done in bronze with a photograph and just the memorial name and who he was. So I wanted to clarify that. Another clarification is that Deputy City Manager Charles Perez identified that there would be $35,000 or $3,800 ongoing cost, and it really is just $300 a year ongoing cost, so I wanted to clarify that for everybody. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins, let's see your hand is up.
Yes, I guess this would be a question to Sylvia. I remember at the presentation, they were-- to Reach, they were looking for some support. But also, as part of that, the group that was promoting this was seeking out other donations and stuff like that, and Reach was being one supplemental part of it. But in fact, there were a lot of other donations that you were seeking. Have you been successful, and to what level?
Yeah, so thanks for asking that question. We originally approached Reach to be the receiving end of the donations because Reach is a nonprofit organization, that they could actually receive donations from the community. I believe a few actually did come into the organization to Reach itself. And then it was at maybe like a February/March meeting that the Reach Board did actually agree to do that on behalf of the Jonathan Sharkey Memorial. So that came about. Whether it is that the city council would say you have to raise the rest of the money, I believe we have donors in place and in line in order to make sure that the rest of the money or the, you know, less than $1,000 that is needed to fund the plaque would be raised by the community. So that could happen, if that was the question.
Thank you. Councilmember Hernandez, let's see your hand is up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to offer my comments on this item. And, you know, I didn't know Jonathan Sharkey very well, except for the couple of years before he passed. But what I have learned of him has been a legacy that he left behind that I think is deserved of the recognition that's being recommended here tonight in this staff report. John also served on the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, which is quite a formidable governing board in the county. And it's formidable because of the individuals who sit on that board, myself not included in that. But it's-- people on the boards that I've sat on, not only the RSD, but in other jurisdictions, always have something amazing to say about Jonathan Sharkey. And the imprint that he left on the organizations and the people that he worked with have been significant. I look at this item right now, and I see that it went through the process. It was reviewed by the Citizen Advisory Committee. It's been recommended by them. I would like to make a motion that we approve this recommendation.
Councilmember Martinez. First of all, was there already a motion on the table?
Yes.
And a second also?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So I mean-- from what I understand, is we would vote first on that. But I wanted to ask Sylvia, since I didn't know Jonathan Sharkey very well, if she can just give me the top three accomplishments that he had done in his time of service here for Waynimi.
Sure, I could do that. So Waynimi's charter was crafted under his leadership as a city council member. So if you go back to the olden days, it is-- for the record, his name is on that charter. Number two is that he was a public service, you know, far beyond anybody who's ever served on the council while I was in office. He was the epitome of a council member. Right before I was sworn in in 2008, he actually took over the helm and acted as mayor with regards to the current mayor, Tony Young, being ill and not being able to attend the meetings. And so he just stepped in and, you know, really helped guide the city during that time. Another thing, too, is that he was part and parcel of our relationship with the military. He served on RDP 21 for a number of years, went back to DC every year as part of the RDP family. But also, too, is that, you know, he was part and parcel of what we did to shore up our shoreline that would affect both Waynimi as well as Magoo. And so he had the full depth and breadth of serving as a regional player, but also, too, knowing the importance of the city of Port Waynimi and what we needed to accomplish. Those are just three items. I know that when we talk about shoreline protection and erosion, that had to be a congressional apportionment in order to make it happen. And there were many players, and you know that there's many players that come to the table for that shoreline protection. And John Sharkey was always front and center with all of that. And so we need to recognize him, and I believe that the walkway is one of the most important assets for the community. But also, too, that really is part and parcel of what he did. He protected that shoreline and all the infrastructure along Surfside Drive that we all love to recreate in. He was right there championing every single step of the way in order for that-- the beach to be replenished when it could be.
Councilmember Martinez, we do have a motion and a second. I'd like-- as I understand, the motion is to recommend that a tree be planted in memory of John Sharkey and also a plaque be installed at City Hall. That is the motion that was made and seconded. And can we take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Could you ask me last, please, Kristi?
Okay. Councilmember Hernandez? And Mayor Pro Tem Rollins? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes.
And Councilmember Martinez? That would make the motion pass on a 3-2 vote.
Okay, thank you.
So my motion doesn't get heard?
Yes.
Your motion didn't receive a second, or at least not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, there wasn't time to request a second, and we just went right into another discussion, so. No second?
Can you repeat the motion?
My motion was to accept the recommendation of the staff report has submitted by Mrs. Schnapp and approved by the Citizen Advisory Committee. And that is for the-- the recognition on the walkway, on the promenade.
Would both motions conflict?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Not hearing a second. Last call for a second. Hearing none, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. Item number 11-- no, excuse me. Item number 10, Water Rates Post Analysis.
Sorry, I can interrupt you. We should go ahead and do item number nine, which is the Waynimi Hero Award for Miguel Rodriguez.
Miguel, I'm so sorry to forget you. I'm sorry. Okay, item number nine, and thank you, Madam Clerk. I really appreciate your help always. Item number nine, 2020 Annual Waynimi Hero Award, Miguel Rodriguez. City Deputy-- Assistant City Manager Charles Perez, can you please provide the report?
So good evening once again. Agenda item number nine pertains to a nomination for the Waynimi Heroes Award. The application is submitted pursuant to Section 5 of the Heroes History and Heritage Policy and seeks to recognize Miguel Rodriguez as the 2020 Waynimi Hero Award recipient. Section 5 of the policy provides the process by which the city may honor persons or groups that have demonstrated unique contributions to public safety, community development, cultural heritage, community service, the environment, or economic development. Mr. Rodriguez is the community outreach manager for the Oxnard Harbor District and coordinates various programs that provide assistance to members of our community. Most notably, Mr. Rodriguez led the efforts to organize and execute the Feeding the Frontline Workers in Community to the Community Food Distribution Programs. These programs serviced more than 38,000 families throughout Ventura County. The application was reviewed by staff and found to be in alignment with policy requirements. The item was also presented to the Citizen Advisory Commission on October 28th. The commission unanimously supported the recommendation as well. If approved, the recipient would be recognized at the 2022 Waynimi Beach Festival via a city council proclamation and would have his name and photo displayed on the Waynimi Hero plaque at City Hall. That concludes the staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. The applicant is also present, and he may want to add additional information or answer questions.
You're on mute, Mayor.
Thank you. I have one additional question. So at our next amazing Waynimi Beach Festival, not only would we honor Miguel Rodriguez, but we will also honor the 2022 recipient. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. Assuming that there is an application and a review process and approval by the city council, we could recognize the 2022 recipient. Because the policy was created just last year, we made an allowance for recognitions in the past five years. So this is the 2020 recipient based on Mr. Rodriguez's accomplishments and contributions to the community in that year. But we could definitely recognize more than one person at that event.
And when would we start the-- I mean, I would like to get the information out there so that we could alert the community to think about nominating people, because I think it's a really great thing. So Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Gama. I wanted just to comment on this nomination. I was the one who submitted Miguel for this Heroes Award. And unfortunately, I don't think the staff letter really captures the degree or significance of Miguel's impact on the community during COVID-19. We all know him for him serving the front lines, but he's-- he's just this amazing devoted public servant, from what I've observed. He works with marginalized communities, like the farmworkers and people who are food insecure. He does an amazing job on logistics, working with the donors who donate the food and getting the food out there. And he does-- and he's out there almost every weekend. He's just this amazing man, and I just thought it was-- he was deserving of this Heroes Award. So thank you.
Very well stated. Any other comments, questions?
I'd like to make a comment. Miguel, you're terrible. You do nothing for the community. Just kidding. He does so many things for the community. In fact, most recently, Volker Park Food Share, which we all-- many of us participated in. And I think this is very deserving. Congrats, Miguel.
Councilmember Martinez, do you have a comment?
Well, I think most of us love Miguel, you know, so that's about it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
No controversy on this one. He's a great guy, and he deserves it.
So for me-- and I concur with everything Councilmember Hernandez said, logistics, this and that, and all those great, wonderful things that Miguel does. But for me, what strikes me is his passion for helping people and being engaged in our community. I've seen him-- and you just can't escape the passion that he has. And the port has done a wonderful job in hiring this man to be their community outreach, because our community is different. We, you know-- we have challenges that other communities don't have. And Miguel reminds me of my father. My father came to Colonia to set up his medical practice to help people. And when I see Miguel engaging with people, it's that passion that comes out to help. And I'm super excited for him, and I greatly appreciate the fact that Councilmember Hernandez nominated him. And I certainly want to hear from Miguel. If not now, maybe in about 10 seconds.
Well, I'd like to move approval on the motion to nominate Miguel Rodriguez for the Heroes Award for 2020.
I would like to second that. Madam Clerk, we can take a roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez? And Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Voting passes unanimously.
Miguel?
Would you like to say some words?
Wow, it's-- I think this is probably the greatest and biggest honor of my life.
Oh, that's-- that makes me feel great.
And, you know, I'm very humbled, and I really would like to just acknowledge the many people that give up their weekends and that give up their Fridays specifically to drive, you know, these trucks full of bananas and all these other resources and that have at times so valiantly risked their own health to help those that are less fortunate at our events, just to provide, you know, some food security. And I also like to recognize the port for giving me the ability to leverage our resources and our partnerships with our customers. And ultimately, I think, as we all know here in this particular meeting, we're all trying to lead by example and have that servant leadership and our values that carries us forward, right, with that vision that we can-- that carries us forward, right, with that vision that we can make our community better just by being present and by being active, so. I am very pleased, I'm very grateful, and I just have no more words because it's the best honor of my life, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for those words, and the thing that really gets me excited is is you're making a difference a little bit at a time, every week, every week, you're making a difference, and over time, it adds up into a huge difference, so to that, I give you a standing applause, and I know everybody on this council is super proud of what you've done over these last two years, I mean, almost two years, it's, you know, it's it's there, and you're out there, and you're doing it, and I just appreciate that very much, thank you.
You didn't let COVID stop you, so that's a testament to your perseverance.
Yes, and now I feel guilty because I haven't been able to attend any of your events, so I'm gonna have to find a way to get out there and help you, and thank you so much. Any other comments for Miguel? And thank you for sticking with us to this late hour, and we look forward to working with you and long into the future and helping our community, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are gonna move on to item ten, water rate post-analysis. Lupe Acero, Deputy Finance Director, I believe will provide a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council and staff. This is Lupe Acero, Deputy Finance Director, and I have a presentation to showcase the post-analysis of the water study. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry, I think I was on mute. Can you guys hear me? Okay.
Very little, you're very faint.
Okay, let me have my speaker. Okay, is that better?
A little.
Okay. So, good evening, I wanted to provide an update on the post-analysis for the first, really, first year and, let's say, seven or eight months of the post-rate increase. Just to give you a little bit of history, in 2017, the city council authorized staff to contract with Rafalas Financial Consultants to conduct the water study volumetric rate study. And Rafalas provided the final report to the city in December of 2019. The city implemented the approved water rate changes effective March first of 2020. One thing is, it's important to note that when the new rates were projected, this included all expenses necessary to ensure the financial self-sustainability of the water fund, repayment of the general fund loans, and the accumulation of appropriate capital reserves to ensure the integrity of the aging distribution system. So that was the intent of the study. And also, the water study structure indicated that approximately seventy percent of single-family residential customers, so those who use less than seven hundred cubic feet, would experience no impact or slightly lower water bills. In total, when looking at total revenues, the increase of total revenues was projected at 1.9% per year. Tonight's city council actions steps are to receive and file the water rate analysis. And with that, we go into this slide, and I know it's a little bit busy, but this slide represents a comparison of the total revenue from rates in fiscal year 2020 compared to fiscal year 2021. Now, one thing to note is 2020 represents audited financial statements, so those numbers have been audited. 2021, it's unaudited at this point. The revenue from rates, which is the amount at the bottom that's boxed in for fiscal year 2020, was $7.4 million, almost 7.5. In 2021, the revenue from rates is 7.6 million, so we were looking at an increase of $120,000, $120,326. And now, if we look up on the top at the total, the first section is variable charges, so these are the revenue from variable rates. And the revenue from variable rates went up almost 1.7 million when we compared 2020 to 2021. And then, when we look at the fixed charges, that revenue decreased almost 1.6 million dollars. And that has to do with the way that the new rates were structured. So under the new rate structure, for single-family residential, the monthly fixed rate decreased, and there was a three-tier inclining rate structure that was established based on water usage. And then, for the multi-unit residential, you can see the multi-unit up on top from variable rates, it went up 522,000, but then you look at the fixed rate down below, the second line down on the second section, you see that that went down from 920,000, 839, to 219,704, so there was a decrease of 703,000. And that is because for the multi-unit residential, there was a fixed monthly fee based on number of dwellings. And before, so that the fee was based on number of dwellings, dwelling units, and the current bill is a function of meter size and water usage. And so that's part of the reason that we see that swing between variable and fixed charges. And the other note that I want to point out is that the new rate structure was designed to encourage water conservation, so users that use more than 700 cubic feet of water would, are paying more for that excess water over seven, 700 cubic feet. And then, the bottom, the bottom section, I have projection from Rafalas, so that was the projection that the study had, the revenue they had projected. In 2020, they had projected 7.5 million, and in 2021, almost 8 million, 7798877. So there is a variance versus the actuals and the projection, and that's that number closer to the bottom here, variance in revenue from rates. In 2020, we're experiencing 88,000 less than what the study projected. In 2021, about 185,000 less. Then, one thing to just remember is that the study was done, they started in 2017, so they used figures from 2017 and just rolled them forward, so a lot of things have, a lot of variables have changed. But right now, we're looking at, if you're, looking at 2021, we're, we have a variance of about 2.3% versus what the study had projected in revenue from rates. On the next slide, it's, this next slide includes, it's a full projection for 2021 compared to Rafalas. So this is actual results, again, unaudited, and this is all the way down, the entire profit and loss statement, so it's the income for 2021. So Rafalas, when they have projected income, they project the total income of 3.4 million dollars. We're looking at ending up at 2.2. At 2.2 million dollars. And you can see the revenue for rates, those are the numbers that we looked at in the previous slide, so we're a difference of about 185,000 dollars. And then, what's in, the other two items that are in total revenue is the interest, which is off by about 70,000 from the projection, and then miscellaneous revenue, which includes delinquent fees, and that's, there's a variance there of 185,000. And we had in the projection, the delinquent fees that were built in the projection were 125,000, so that's, that's the bulk of that variance there. And so that's the total revenue is different from the projection by 441,000. And then, down below are the operating and maintenance expenses, so you can see the projection for each line item, and then the actuals and the variances here. So most of the variances are, were, in total expenditures, were, are higher, projected to be higher, 827,000 than was, based on, versus the study. Most of that, you can see, is the operating expenses, they're higher by 244,000. And then, the cost allocation and risk allocation, their number that they used was pretty light. We are looking at a cost allocation of 910,000, so that's the other piece of the variance, 435,000 dollars. And then, again, looking at bottom line income, we're looking at ending 2021 at 2.2 million dollars versus the projection of almost 3.5. And then, in the next slide, I wanted to share the actual, the study projected again that seventy percent of single-family residential customers who use less than 700 cubic feet of water would experience no impact or lower water bills. And so we polled the information for actual consumption for single-family residential customers, including care customers, and this is the results right here. So this summarizes the results of usage. Forty-nine percent of customers fall in tier one, thus their usage is zero to four hundred cubic feet of water. Twenty-one percent fall in tier two, and then we, thirty percent fell in tier three, which is higher than the 700 cubic feet. So as a result, we are seeing that the actual results are seventy percent of customers are using water less than 700 cubic feet. And on the next slide, I wanted to share the actual bill, and I just have to note on this one, this is the total bill, so this includes, this is a customer bill, customer A and customer B, and this includes sewer and refuse. And so the total, customer A is customer, and this is not based on an actual customer, just wanted to show an example, customer A has usage under 700 cubic feet, and so their usage was 500 cubic feet in the before and the after scenario, and their bill decreased $2.20. And customer B had usage of greater than 700 cubic feet, and there, you can see the increase in the total bill is 125,000 dollars and 72 cents. And most of that is because you can see that the usage at the last 2200 cubic feet were at 678 per, so that's basically driving the variance there, or the increase in the bill. And then, I have added another, no, it didn't pull in. And so, so again, in the, can we go back to the previous one for a second? And so, the previous slide, I wanted to share, if it was just for those numbers, $120.49 is really $56.62 if I'm looking just at water and not including the sewer and the refuse. So that would be 56.62 is what the math calculates to, and then the post is 54.51. So really, it's still a variance of $2.11 less. And then, for the other, for customer B, I did the same, I took just the water, and for the water, instead of 160, it's $94.62, will be just water, and $215.51 will be the post instead of the 285, because like I said, it includes other components. And so we're still looking at an increase in customer B of $120.89 more because of the higher usage. Next slide, please. And so to summarize, and looking at what the study provided and looking at the analysis really for the first year and a half, if you will, it indicates that seventy percent of single-family residential customers that are using less than the 700 cubic feet have seen little or no impact to their water bill. And those customers that have higher usage are seeing the increases in their water bills. Again, the study projected a revenue growth of 1.9%, we're not quite there yet. The numbers that I shared, the growth is 1.65%, but we are seeing an increase year over year in revenue. The projected net income, bottom line income, was projected at 3.8 million, and our numbers indicate, again, they're unaudited results, but they indicate that we're probably gonna come in at 2.2 million for fiscal year 2021. Any questions?
Thank you for that, Mayor Pro Tem Rollins, you're the only hand I could see, so go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I noticed that our interest rates are way lower than we projected initially. Do you have any idea of like what the original interest rates were going to be and what they actually have been? Because I know that's one of the big reasons why we have a drop in revenue.
Ms. Acero, did you hear the question?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes, if I, if I read it right, our predicted interest rates that we were gonna, revenue interest rates were quite a bit lower than we projected, but am I correct?
We had a decrease in interest, that's correct, $70,000. It was on slide, one of the slides, right here. So part of it, that's a small component of it, a component of the variance, but yes. We had interest projected at 135,000, and we're looking at interest at 65,000, so $70,000 variance is due to the interest being lower that was projected.
So it's basically about half of what we had expected, give or take, correct?
Correct, from an interest standpoint, yes.
So my question was, when they initially did the study, do you know what kind of percentage rates they were hoping to get that?
I can take a look, I have the dollars, but I can certainly get you that information.
Okay, I guess the other thing, I guess on a good thing, is people are paying their bills. If like the delinquent fees were projected at 204 and they're down to 18, everybody's paying their bills. Would that be a fair assessment?
We're not assessing delinquent fees, and that's the reason for the variance. If, if a customer doesn't pay a bill, we're still including it in revenue because we still accrue for it, so it just goes into our receivable. So let's just say customers are not, and we do have customers that have not paid, they're still reflected in these numbers because it's still revenue that's earned, so we still have it in these numbers, but then the offset, instead of having the cash in the bank, it's a receivable, so they owe us money. So that's, the number that's in here for revenue, it's all of the revenue that we either have collected or that we expect to collect.
And I guess my, my final comment is all reports that I get is we're in a continual drought, and we're probably gonna continue to be so, and I think the state is looking to do major, the amount of water, you know, California uses, and so I think probably the incentive that we have to cut back on water will make, is a good thing, really, I think it's training the community that, you know, or basically educating them that we are gonna have to cut back and to be prepared and look towards those things. And like I had mentioned before, I hope that, you know, the city in their future landscaping efforts, which I think we're doing, looking to reduce the amount of water as much as possible. possible in our use of water for various things. So, great. Thank you. Very great report.
Councilmember Hernandez.
I just had a quick request for clarification on the cost allocation and the positive variance that is shown here of three hundred and thirty five thousand. What do you attribute that to? You may have mentioned it and I just missed it and I apologize if I did. But could you add some further clarification on that, please?
Yeah, the cost allocation and the risk allocation, the study had four hundred and seventy four thousand dollars. The actual allocation is nine hundred and ten thousand. And that's based on the cost allocation study that we did in 2020. So every, at least every two years, we do a cost allocation study to pick up any changes or variances in cost. And so the numbers that we're using in 2021 are based on our 2020 study that is done by an outside company. It looks to me, looking and doing the, looking at the projection that was done, that the numbers that were picked up were numbers from 2017. So they didn't include the latest numbers from the cost allocation.
And so in your summary, would you say that the new, the new water rates, a new water rate formula is having a positive effect on our ability to meet the drought requirements?
I would say that based on the, the actual results that we retrieved, that the actual results really from a usage, they mirror what the study intended to where we do have seventy percent of customers using under seven hundred cubic feet of water. And it's those thirty percent that are paying the higher amounts because the variable rates. So the variable rate for tier three, if you're looking at tier two and tier three, it goes at fourteen point five percent. So if you jump from the seven, anything higher than seven, you're paying, instead of paying, looking at twenty twenty one, instead of paying six dollars and three cents, you're going to go to six ninety one. And so from that standpoint, I would say that it would encourage water conservation because that jump is pretty significant.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Good report. You're on mute, mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Councilmember Martinez, do you have any comments or questions?
I guess as a summary, pretty much those people that are wasting more water are going to get charged more, right? That's pretty much what it was.
Right.
Okay.
It looks like seventy percent of our residents are using less, are doing good. Is that what it's, seventy percent are using seven or less? Thirty percent are the real ones we need to target to get them to lower their water
Yeah. I would like to say that I am so proud to be a part of this city council right now and a part of this city because when this new water rate plan was marketed to our residents, they were told that seventy percent of them are going to see a decrease in their bills. And it appears to me that we as a government have delivered what we told our residents. And I couldn't be happier to know that because I was speaking for myself. I was like, you know, that's a pretty big commitment to make, guys. I hope we live up to it. And so, so my question, Ms. Osara, did you, did you look at the promises made? And did you have a discussion with staff about after your analysis and how it matched up to the promises that were made?
I actually did reach out to the gentleman that worked on this study. So I got a lot of information from him as to the assumptions that went into the, into the study. And so that's how I was able to compare the actual results and mirror, basically do a comparison to what they had in the study. And that's where I learned also their numbers when it comes to like operating and maintenance expenses, they started back in 2017. So a lot of those numbers, they rolled forward. And obviously, they had to make some assumptions. But yes, I did reach out to them.
Well, that's great. Any other questions or comments? If you could take down your presentation so I could see everyone, that'd be great. All right. Any other comments or questions? I don't see any hands. Thank you very much for a very informative report. Really appreciate it. Any other?
We need a motion to approve this.
Yes. Motion to approve? Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Please.
Mayor Chris Tim Rollins?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes, so we'll file and receive the report. Thank you. Moving on to item number 11, renewal and reconsideration of remote meetings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953E. Mr. City Attorney Kevin Spalding, there you are.
Thank you. I'm here. Thank you to Mayor Gama, honorable council members. This should be feeling a little old hat to you all since we've done this, what, this is our third time now. As you may remember, AB 361 is a new law that amends Section 54953 of the Government Code. And it allows local agencies to continue with remote meetings under certain circumstances without complying with the Brown Act teleconferencing requirements. In order to continue meeting remotely, the city council would have to make one of two findings. For each of these findings, we would have to find that there is a proclaimed state of emergency, which there is issued by Governor Newsom on March 4th, 2020. And then either the state of emergency continues to directly impact the ability of the members to meet safely in person, or that a state or local official continues to impose or recommend measures to promote social distancing. As you may remember, the Ventura County Public Health Officer has issued his, his recommendation to promote social distancing on September 21st, 2021. And as of, and currently, that recommendation remains in effect. So on those two findings alone, the council would be entitled to go back to remote, or to remain in remote meetings, or everything is at council's discretion at the moment.
So if we, and I'm sorry for jumping in on questions, colleagues, but if, if we decide to go back in person, then we would still be subject to the mask mandate?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And any other questions? I'm sorry for jumping in ahead of schedule, but.
I don't have any questions. I don't know how you guys feel about doing this for one more month or at least finishing up like the year and then starting off maybe in, in person the year, like in January. That's, that's mine. I think, I think we should probably move in and, you know, back in person at least by January.
Any other comments? I would like to move in person like yesterday. I just think it's better. And I think we'd be wearing masks. And, you know, we all go out to dinner and, you know, we go to restaurants, we go to V-Cog dinner, a hundred and forty people there, and nobody has a mask on and we seem to do okay. So, but it takes a majority. So any other discussion, questions, comments, motions?
I actually hate wearing the masks the entire meeting, to be honest.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I like, there are benefits to having Zoom meetings. I get it. But I don't know, I just think being in person is better. But that's my opinion and I'm not the majority. So would somebody like to take a stab at a motion?
I'd make a motion to continue the remote meetings for the rest of the, this year 2021 and then revisit it at the end on our last meeting to decide what we're going to do in January.
I just have a clarification for city attorney. We're supposed to revisit this every thirty days, is that correct?
That is correct, which means we can't make a motion for the end of the year because we will miss the, what is it, December 20th meeting? We'll have to have another, we'll have to come back before council for at least one more re-upping of the remote meeting requirement.
Okay, so we would be back on the, on the 20th, right?
Well, you could amend, you could amend your motion just to, to continue for thirty more days because that's the constraints we have on by the government.
Exactly.
Sounds good. I mean, yeah. I move to approve the recommendation for one more, oh, I mean, for one more month, thirty more days.
There isn't a recommendation per se.
Yeah, no, I know, I take that back. I just saw that.
The, the way that I would phrase the motion is that you move that council determine that a state of emergency or a proclamation of emergency continues to exist and that the local health officer is recommending social distancing and that remote meetings will continue for thirty days.
Okay. I motion to continue remote meetings for the next thirty days.
A second.
Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez? I saw the yes, I didn't hear it, but I saw the yes.
All right, yes.
Thank you. Mayor Chris Tim Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Capital N, capital zero, no, no, sorry, I'm trying to be funny and I know I'm not, but no.
The motion passed without a vote.
Okay. We're getting there, folks, and I'm still dealing with my allergies. We're moving on to number 12, 2022 City Council Meeting Calendar. Will staff present the report, please?
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. This is City Clerk Christie Bucktemper for the record. Tonight, I have the pleasure of presenting the proposed 2022 City Council Meeting Calendar for your consideration. To summarize, the council calendar follows an adopted policy of meetings at 6:30 PM on the first and third Monday of each month. This consistency helps provide a meeting schedule which allows for public participation and also ensures public transparency and compliance with the Brown Act. Council typically chooses to cancel the first meeting of the year due to the holidays and the likelihood that many residents and business owners will either be out of town or otherwise engaged, which decreases the chance of full public participation. As with the past years, staff is recommending the cancellation of the January 3rd, 2022 meeting as it falls directly after the New Year's holiday. A tentative special meeting will be proposed during this time to provide mandatory ethics and Brown Act training to all council members. In the event that a Monday meeting is scheduled on or near a holiday, the council's previous practice has been to reschedule the meeting to the following Tuesday. The proposed meeting schedule follows that practice for meetings that fall on holidays such as Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. All of the above fall on a Monday and are being proposed to be rescheduled to the following Tuesday. Also, as previous practice, council has routinely gone dark through the month of August. This does not necessarily mean a delay in city business or council action as the council holds multiple workshops and special meetings throughout the year, giving the, giving the city council and public ample opportunities to address time sensitive items. Additionally, this year is an election year with August being the candidate nomination filing period and a good time to focus on election related priorities. The city benefits from having all five council members present at each meeting and prioritizes a meeting schedule that allows for full public participation. There's no fiscal impact to establish the city meeting calendar. And before you, as a recommendation, to approve the proposed 2022 City Council Meeting Calendar, which follows adopted and previous practices and allows for an established calendar to help provide consistency and public transparency. This concludes my report and I welcome any questions you might have at this time.
You're on mute.
No. Any questions? I'd like to entertain a motion.
A move?
Second. Excellent. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call vote, please?
My final roll call vote of the night. There have been many. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Chris Tim Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Motion passed without a vote, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are now going to hear from our city manager, comments and reports.
Thank you, Mayor, honorable city council. I have a few things, mainly just updates. Now that the memorial trees have been approved, we do have plans to coordinate with the families for tree planting and then a separate dedication ceremony where the plaque and the trees will be, you know, facilitated for a respectable and dignified service. We have several events ending in November through December. The city is known for their annual emphasis on our holiday periods, and I just wanted to go through a couple of things. We do have, for the first time, a turkey drive that I think Councilmember Perez mentioned in either this meeting or a previous meeting. That will commence on the 22nd of November. And I know we've rallied somewhere in the neighborhood of 220 turkeys through donations that we would deliver as a package of food for families that register. Following the turkey drive, obviously, is Thanksgiving. And then on the 30th, we have our annual tree lighting ceremony, followed by the Santa float on the 3rd of December.
Do we get to ride on the Santa float? Mr. Potter, do we get to ride on the Santa float?
The riding is encouraged. In fact, we are looking to have a variety of different participate, participants within the city employee group. And also, we're working with schools to bring in some kids to participate in our Santa float. I don't have all the details to share tonight, but that is a little bit different than we have done in the past few years. But yes, if you'd like to ride, or any of the council members like to ride and float, I'm sure we could accommodate that. And then we had a couple of things that occurred in this last week that, that the committee may have missed. One of them is we had our last movie in the park showing, great attendance, a horde here's a who. And then we'll, we'll put a scheduler for the future movie series next year. We installed our volleyball courts, two of them anyhow. Those two courts will be the first of four. We're going to look at the, the maintenance issues associated with that location. And we're also investigating the opportunity to put the two additional courts between parking lot B and C, if we can clear that through the Coastal Commission. And then we also completed a variety of different projects. One of them is finally repairing the promenade wall at the end of Ventura, at the, at Ventura Surfside Promenade. And with that, that concludes my updates for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We'll now go to council member reports and comments.
Are we allowed to ask questions of the city manager?
Yes.
Okay. May I?
Yes, go ahead, councilmember.
Yeah, I'd like to know where we are with the city's EOP. I was really hoping the committee would get together and go over the checklist that the consultant had sent us, so we had a chance to go through that together. I think that is a very valuable learning experience for us to sit down and just talk out some of the final details. But if you could just tell us where we are with that, I'd appreciate it.
There was about thirty inch list items. I'm pretty sure we went through all those this past week. We'll reconvene the board to validate and verify those, those last items. So it should be wrapping up. That's about all the information I have currently to share.
Thank you.
Councilmember Perez? Your hand is up.
Over. I know I had it on, then I took it off, and I should get back on. Um, November events? Just maybe the senior luncheon.
Oh, yeah.
The senior lunch is, is on the seventh of December, seventh of December. The only events we have, um, uh, in November was, uh, we did our, um, our Veterans Day banners. Um, and, uh, we're contemplating what we do special for Veterans Day next year and put that on our, our annual calendar. Um, and the only other one is the tree lighting ceremony on the thirtieth.
No, we're having a good turnout with registration regarding the senior luncheon. When I'm doing my food deliveries on Tuesday, I have a number of them asking me about how to register and everything, and I wasn't sure how they're getting the info, if, if they are getting the info.
Um, we, we, we have a campaign, uh, uh, to do outreach, including Mallard for our utility bills. Um, that should be in the next utility bill cycle. Um, there is, um, a site for registration and sponsorship on the city's webpage and under, um, Recreation Community Services.
So, on, in regards to the turkey, um, turkey bowl, what'd you call it, the turkey?
Turkey drive.
Turkey drive. Um, so will the city council be involved? I, I would like to volunteer in, in the distribution. Um, how, how's that gonna happen?
Yeah, there's a, a volunteer period. I think Chief Williams will be putting out information. This is, I, I, I mean, this literally happened within the last week to ten days.
Sorry.
And, you know, the, uh, yeah. The offering has been pretty tough, so we're, we're around that, but we're gonna need volunteers, yes, sir. And, and there'll, there'll be a way to sign up and participate.
Now, are we getting the appropriate number of people interested? Cause, I mean, it's right around the corner, right? I mean...
Yeah, the registrations, um, are, are already topping, I think, a hundred. Uh, that was our initial, uh, plan, but it'll probably exceed two hundred registrations.
Okay, so we'll, we're not gonna be stuck with turkeys?
No, we had an initial estimate of like fifty we were gonna try to aim for, and then all of a sudden we got inundated with food and people and registering, and then you saw turkeys showing up in the lobby and...
It sounds like Miguel, Miguel is rubbing off on us. Way to go, Miguel.
In, in, in fact, you may need to, to, um, volunteer your freezer.
Yeah, if you see a random turkey somewhere, it's because we ran out of space to put it.
Where are they actually being kept?
Um, city manager, I can comment on that. Uh, we have a hundred and sixty people registered thus far out of the two hundred and twenty turkeys that we have. Um, and we've also, um, have our outreach efforts with the Wainimi School District that's helping us identify families in need. Uh, the turkeys are being kept at Western Precoiling in Oxnard, and they volunteered, uh, their freezers, uh, to hold our turkeys, uh, which have already been purchased and donated.
Okay, um, so, the V F W, i- if we have additional spaces available, perhaps we could go to the V F W and contact families on base, cause I do know that there's families on base that could benefit from this as well. But the V F W has given away six turkey dinners, but, um, there may be more demand, so. Anyways, uh, just thought I'd throw that out there. Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on, on some of the, uh, topics that, uh, Mr. Connors brought up. First of all, the Thanksgiving. Um, what we have done, um, is there is a, uh, food drive for the senior exercise program that started, uh, this week, so the three days that they exercise, they're turning in canned food, not turkeys, cause we have been told they have plenty of turkeys. But they'll be doing that for the next, uh, um, three meetings and stuff. And then, um, we've encouraged them to go to their local HOAs and, um, perhaps starting a little drive to bring the food to the, um, to, to the police station. I think that's the place that it's been chosen to bring, so. Hopefully, we will have lots of food for our needy people in the community. Um, the, um, the, uh, the luncheon for the senior event that they mentioned, just to remind all the councilmen, uh, uh, you can do your part to help out on that day too, cause in the past, it's been a tradition that um, city council people come out and help serve the, uh, food to the, uh, seniors during that day. So it's a nice day for everybody, gives you a chance to kind of meet everyone. Um, and finally, um, on the volleyball that you had mentioned, uh, I had an opportunity to go out there and check it out the other day, and the poles looked very good. I was just wondering when the, uh, the nets and the lines and those types of things will come in for people to be able to play on them.
Yeah, I, uh, and, uh, Miss Sill may, may be online, but, um, the, the, the nets had to be recut, so Sports Court is in the process of, of fitting the, the nets, so it'll be uh, probably be a, a week or so before the nets are installed.
Okay, um, I guess in the future, uh, from other cities that, um, I had worked at, um, it can be a revenue and a publicity source. You can actually get various different companies to sponsor the net and put their name on the, on the logo, tell, you know, you know, keep the nets in good shape and also keep a continual supply as they wear out, so. Keep that in mind, and then, uh, as the staff developed a, um, um, a maintenance policy, I know there were a lot of concerns as far as sand shifting from away from the, the volleyball courts to bring up the potential rocks and those types of things. What steps have been made to make them the best possible surface?
Excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem. Well, I understand that clarifying questions might be necessary during city manager's comments. We are getting woefully close to a discussion on a, on an item that is not on the agenda. Um, so, eh, for this, I think we should treat the city manager's comments much like the council member comments in that we can ask clarifying questions, but we should not engage in discussion.
Can I add, or, or is this the, the condition of the, uh, the, the sand that the courts are being installed in that he mentioned?
But I think what the city attorney is, uh, alluding to is that, um, perhaps you can make a request for an agenda item to, to, on that item.
If I may, if I may, eh, I, I think just to close the issue, anything that we install, we're working with the, the vendors, um, to establish a maintenance program, um, and evaluate, especially with the, with the, with the sand issue. Um, it's a, it's somewhat of a test site, um, and so that we, we are, are gonna work closely with, uh, our installer and our vendor, um, to make sure that we maintain, um, both courts um, and then future courts, um, to keep those at a high level.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
Alrighty, alrighty, so now we're moving on. Any other comments, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to council members' reports and comments. We shall start with Councilmember Perez.
I do not have any reports as of yet.
Got turkeys?
Sorry?
Do you have any turkeys?
No, I have no turkeys. I have nothing, no. Um, my next board meeting is this week, so hopefully next time I will have a board update.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Um, nothing new, really. I mean, we took a look at the finances for Reach. Um, we did lose some money for the, uh, Wainimi Beach Festival. Um, so hopefully we can improve that next year. Um, some of it had to do with the parking, um, but anyways, that's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a few, uh, things to comment on. Um, I have some meetings coming up, the Ventura County, uh, Regional, um, Energy Alliance. Um, they've resumed meetings and, uh, they, they will continue to be, uh, on Zoom. Uh, V R S D, we continue to, uh, hold our meetings on Zoom. Uh, R D P twenty-one, uh, we had a strategic planning meeting last week, and, um, the two items that they're most interested in, uh, is our, the beach, uh, sand replenishment program. Um, they, uh, every meeting we have, they ask about it, and I think we're trying to get Susie Watkins to come in and talk to us about that. And also, um, they are still interested in, uh, working with the city to do something with the wastewater facility, so I just wanted to, um, if Don Vila Fana is listening, to, uh, make sure that he's in contact with, uh, the Navy representatives, uh, to engage them in that, uh, civil, military civil, um, agreement for, uh, doing some more work or doing some work on the wastewater facility. Um, I also attended a meeting of Surf Rider Foundation. Um, we had been in discussion about the Huntington Beach oil spill and what would happen if we had a spill here on our beach, what it would look like, what the response would look like. So I'll be asking for an agenda item, um, to ask the council's permission to co-sponsor, um, a workshop, uh, bringing in experts to talk about how to organize volunteers and what we might expect on our beaches in terms of a response to a, an oil spill. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Rollins? What's that? What the heck is that?
Not sure. Chris, um, just briefly, um, uh, I went to, attended the Gold Coast Transportation Commission. Uh, Stephen Brown, who's been the general manager there since, uh, two thousand and ten, is retiring, so they're looking to find a new general manager. Uh, Gold Coast is the people that provide, uh, bus transportation throughout, uh, Port Wainimi and Oxnard. Um, one of the things, uh, that they have done that's kind of unique is they received a grant to, uh, pay for a, uh, an electrical van, to electric-powered van that will be able to pick, they do a lot of, um, special trips to people who are out of the, um, transit locations and stuff like that. So people who need those rides, they're gonna be using this electric van, so that's kind of a nice positive thing that they're moving forward to. Uh, one thing I did want to mention regarding, uh, the Reach Committee, uh, and, uh, Councilman Martinez's rent, we, we came out twenty thousand dollars in the hole, but if you were to put that in perspective, and the last time we had a Wainimi Beach Festival, we, uh, the city would pay close to fifty thousand dollars. So, and that's, I guess you could say we're, we've spent thirty thousand less than we've had in the past, and we had the largest attendance ever, so.
And it was the best yet, too.
Yes.
Yes, it was. Very well received, very well participated. Um, so I, uh, participated in our, our V cog meeting this last month, and, um, Cal Lutheran came in and, and, um, presented on, uh, when home is not a safe haven. They did a, a study in the wake of COVID nineteen and the stay-at-home orders, um, to investigate domestic violent cases. Um, what they found is that, um, domestic violence cases went up during COVID, which probably shouldn't be surprising, but it is a little bit surprising. Um, and, um, Port Wainimi, per one thousand residents, is second in Ventura County in terms of, uh, domestic violence cases. Um, there's some interesting, there's a lot of data and subgroups that you dig into, and, um, one of the trends, one of the ideas is that, um, the domestic violence helps, it's very difficult to, to get a restraining order. Um, and you have to go to the court, and you have to get help, and the, the help center is, is very far away for people in Port Wainimi, it's difficult to get there, so. Um, we, we saw that earlier in that, uh, request that we tabled that we'll be talking about, um, in establishing a, um, um, justice help center here in the, um, South Oxnard, um, Wainimi area so that, um, our residents can have better access to legal support to hope, hopefully stem the tide of domestic violence. Um, um, also, um, at the V cog meeting, we heard, um, from, um, the mayor of Verdondo Beach, um, they started a nonprofit caused, are, called Our Neighborhood Voices dot com, and, um, they're taking issue with the, um, RINA, um, Affordable Housing Initiative. Um, and, uh, they asked that all of us consider passing a resolution, uh, A C A seven. Um, so hopefully that's something that we can look at in the future, um, actually in the next couple of meetings, perhaps. Um, I will, uh, I got information from, um, V cog, uh, was sent out today, matter of fact, and I'll be forwarding it to the city manager, and, um, and we'll, um, as a body, I guess we'll have to agendize and decide whether or not we wanna, um, support, um, um, that initiative. Um, and, uh, Beacon, I put a copy of the Beacon letter that went to, um, the Honorable Julia Brownlee's office, um, in regards to sand replenishment. Um, and I, I am not sure if, uh, R D P twenty-one was copied on it, so I want to make sure that we do get a copy of the letter over to them. Um, cause we are moving forward, um, we, our strategy has, has been developing for the last three years, and, um, we, um, we're all on the same page, we're all working together, and, uh, together, I think we can, could be stronger to, um, get the allocation that we, um, need to mimic Mother Nature so that is to sustain Wainimi Beach and, um, help, uh, maintain national security down at Point Magoo. Um, and my Benadryl is in my head right now, so I'm gonna stop there. Um, and we'll move on to, um, future agenda items. Request for future agenda items, unless there's any other comment that my council colleagues would like to make, that you forgot to make. I don't see anybody, okay. We're gonna move on to request for future agenda items. I'd like to remind the council members that all requested items will require a motion, a second, and a majority vote per the adopted council policy to be placed on a future agenda. Does anyone have any requests for future agenda items? Councilmember Hernandez, I see your hand.
Thank you. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, I would like to request, um, an agenda item, request, um, asking for council approval to, uh, co-sponsor a seminar, uh, or symposium on this city's, or the coastal response to a, Ventura coastal response to a oil spill.
Uh, clarification, would we have interested parties invited, kind of like we did with our sand?
Yes, it would be something like that.
I think that'd be great, so it'll be very much similar to the Sand Summit, but...
Different topic, yeah.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Madam clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Questions unanimously.
Thank you. Any other requests for future agenda items? I would like to make one. Um, we heard from a resident today, and it's an issue that popped up a couple of times this last week, when there's water spewing out of pipes, and we appear to have an inability to rapidly respond to it, so I would like to, I don't want to use the demand, but I would like to request an agenda item of high importance at the next council meeting where staff comes to us and shares with their plan to deal with water leaks expeditiously. Looking for a second.
Second?
Thank you. Madam clerk, can we have a, a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes, am I here? I can't tell if I'm here.
You're here.
Yes, we are.
We're all here.
My internet's being really wonky right now.
I think we're all being wonky.
And Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Questions asked unanimously.
Okay, um, I always forget things. I mean, maybe we should have a forum or something for comments and items for agendas, so anyways. Any other co-, uh, any other requests for future agenda items? I know it's been a long night, and I apologize. Okay, we are going to adjourn this meeting. The time is, I don't have my phone here, so...
Nine P M?
Nine P M? Nice. And, uh, this next meeting will be the... And, uh, this next meeting will be the regular meeting of Monday, December sixth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M. Man, oh, man. This last year has gone quick. Looking forward to, uh, doing a state of the city next time. Now, should I go back on the agenda and, uh, want to make sure that's going to be on the agenda for the twelve-six meeting?
Yes, there it will be.
Thank you. All right. Good night. Good meeting tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.